2932379.
Okay, sounds like we have sound. Paul just texted. That's good. Turning yet? Okay, something we have sound. Paul just texted. Can try to, you want to do it Carl? Thank you.
Now we need to elect the chair and the G A Administrator.
I would move to have mom grant your service chair.
A second motion. I would motion to Anna be the G A Administrator. Okay. Okay, we're gonna talk about the health officer search. Pat Rosson is here to talk and help us. Do you have a name? Suggest to us?
Oh, we've actually, and I've looked at a number of names, some we have not. But we figured the first step was to have the board approve. What we have is a role of medical director.
Yep.
And I think that just makes topics everybody.
Well, I didn't make a couple of everybody to it.
I'll take a quick peek.
I know particularly what his role is, is the director.
Okay.
For rescue.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not addressing. The town health, you know, the tri-count health officer. We're not addressing that at all. We're just going rescue's medical director. And so Carl, what he does is he meets with us on a regular basis and he reviews runs that we've had, that we've asked him to take a look at, the follow up on usually. So and his contract points out, he doesn't perform any physician role active. He doesn't come to rescue calls. He doesn't, you know, do that kind of thing. His job is, or whoever it is, job is just to discuss this.
And that could be a separate person than the health officer.
Correct.
Though Dan has kindly served.
Yeah. So it's my understanding that someone on the board contacted a few people. Is this true?
Yes, it is true. We've not struck a lot of luck yet with our. I have talked to Elizabeth Hart.
Right.
And Jackie, well, Elizabeth talked to Jackie.
Who was this type of person?
Jackie, like in her last name Forn.
Jackie Fornia?
Yeah.
Really? What'd she say?
Busy, I think.
We're trying to get her enjoying rescue forever. That's funny. I didn't know if perhaps it would be better if either Dan or myself talk to them so we can explain more fully, you know, what the position is. Because it really, it's not a heck of a lot of time. You know, we're talking once a month. And since COVID, we've been doing. So I don't know how, how aware do you think they were in of what the responsibilities were of the position?
Well, most of it talked about the health officer. Rather than.
That's another ballgame. That's a, that's a pretty involved job. And we also work with Dan, with the health officer piece as well. So, okay.
Is the medical director roles a require a physician M D?
Does he what?
Does he require an M D?
No, it does not require an M D. That's a great question. Because we have considered. Considered a paramedic. In addition to a couple of docs, it could be an RN. The biggest requirement, I think, is that individual be familiar with main EMS protocols. And that would just be, I mean, give them a protocol book and they can, you know, at their leisure, they can look through it and see.
That's the health officer or?
No, yeah.
I'm only talking about the rescue. I know it gets confusing because Dan has filled the role, you know, in both positions. So we were under the impression that before we could do anything. We can do anything about this, we needed to have you guys approve of what the role looks like.
Well, I think we go, go with what you wish to have because you are the ones that are using that person. So your, your requirements are what we would go by.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you.
I, I agree. Yeah. Okay.
And then along with, along with our job description, there's also the contract quote unquote that Dan signed. Did you see that one too?
I did. That was the second page, right? Yeah.
I mean, that was just for your information kind of thing. It shows, you know, who accepted the role and the responsibility. Well, if, if you guys have any suggestions, maybe sometimes there's people that I have certain heaven thought, you know, that I would love to, I would love to hear it. I'm not quite sure what that process is going to look like. So like a phone call of someone that I think might be interested, talking a little bit about the position. And then maybe that individual could meet with Dan and myself, whenever Dan is ready to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Is that what you would suggest?
Yeah, definitely. Because we're not in the same ballpark.
I just want to make sure that individuals have a good sense of, of, you know, of what the role requires.
Is there coordination between the medical director and the health officer?
There, there was, you know, between Dan and I, yeah. Because I would recommend, we would recommend back and forth with each other, certain individuals that either needed assistance from the health officer, or that maybe someone that rescue had interacted with. Keeping in mind that everything is totally confidential. I mean, I can share those names with Dan and he can share them with me and other rescue members in that kind of place.
From our point though, the health officer is, is quite important for us to fill that, that position.
Absolutely. That's a big job.
Right. So Jackie, is it Fornia?
Yeah.
You're familiar with her, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How, how willing was she to take that job? There's no money.
Yeah.
There's no money. There's an issue right there.
Dan didn't want to work for money. He wanted $60 so he could do the water test at the beach. And that's all he wanted. But that doesn't set you up for someone taking his place.
So are we talking about a health officer or rescue director?
Either one. There's no money.
So we kind of have to look at them separately because, which is difficult because it's been the same person forever. I mean, how long has Dan been a health officer?
A long time. Mike Wentz was at one point.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. He was the health officer?
He must have been a teenager.
Quite a while ago. You don't have to be a doctor to be a health officer either.
Okay.
Like a public health background.
Right.
Actually.
Which he does have.
And that might not be that avenue to go down because if we get the rescue piece covered, and he's the emergency manager.
I don't know that he'd want to have that role again.
But it would fit in well with emergency manager.
Right. He's our emergency manager.
About Mike is. I knew that.
But what was Jackie saying? She was interested in it or?
I think feeling too busy. I mean, you can try calling her. Maybe you're.
But you talked to her about my health officer.
Right, right.
And she goes on, has she?
I don't believe so, no. I also, there was a name in my inbox. I haven't reached out, but I'm happy to do so. I don't know. I don't know who.
This is wife.
That's who Elizabeth Hart is, right?
Yeah.
Chris Collins' wife?
Yeah, what, what's her name?
Elizabeth.
Yeah, she was another one.
Yeah.
That you talked to?
What about the health officer?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's all we've dealt with so far.
Because Dan, Dan seemed to think that she would be excellent.
Yes, because she was, she worked under him. He was her teacher.
Yeah.
So. So that's two names.
Well, then also have spoken with. John Gassper.
He didn't want to break.
Oh, maybe that's the name in my inbox.
John Gassper was wicked interested when we talked to him.
Well, do it again. Yeah, do it again.
I will, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to move the process along until it was okay with the board.
Yeah.
So I saw John at boating day. And he said, my stuff, I don't think will be interesting.
Oh, great.
I thought, I just think he was called and he said, no.
No, that was my impression, but no, go with it.
Check it out. Float the health officer too, Pat.
Yeah.
If you would be so kind.
I mean, it's that individual we'd be working with anyways, so.
Right.
Yeah. All right, but we gotta talk, to me. I mean, we all know this town runs on volunteers, right? But I think it reaches a point where it would be nice to be able to pace people something. I mean, I think the rescue job. There's not a lot of time, although, although there is an amount of work in tracking down individuals. We'll let Dan know, John Smith, you know, went to the hospital with, you know, chest pain. And, you know, this is what we did, this is how we found him, and find out, you know, what happened after he went to hospital. And that individual has to have some kind of relationship with the hospitals to be able to get that information.
Well, abandoned buildings, stuff like that too, or health problems at that building.
And the packet that Dan gave me that I have not copied, I mean, maybe you want to have this, it's on. I think he wants to have this. It's a memorandum of understanding between Dan and Maine General. To be able to access that kind of information. There's a lot in here, a lot of emails, you know what? There's also a doc. Let's see, on the Egypt syndrome, and do not know her name, who I think also may have worked with Dan. That he thought highly of. There's. Tim. Davis. Who's a retired. P A. In Vienna. He used to work at Franklin Memorial. He, he might have bought Marty Gross's house. Okay, I could be wrong in that. And then the other one that popped into my head, because it does not have to be a doc. Excuse me, was Josh Heck. He's a medic. And it's a medic. He's worked in the E R, he's, he's an R N, I know that for sure. And he worked in the E R at Maine General, I'm not a hundred percent sure where he's working now. He's also a firefighter, but I have not approached him. So those are the names that I have.
That'd be good.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So you're gonna start that and through?
Yeah, okay, as long as you guys are good.
Yeah.
Good with that, then I'll, I'll jump on this and. See, we can find out. Um, Dan didn't think that the town, that the town's health officer. Was, was critical to be filled right away. I don't know, I mean, sometimes.
It's not probably as critical as someone to advise you guys.
Well, maybe, yeah. I mean, you see what he writes in the newsletter. I mean, sometimes.
Yeah.
Issues come up and he addresses them.
Yeah.
Um, you know, look at all he did with COVID, you know, with his Saturday zones and, you know, other things. So he certainly, um, then a wealth of information to people in the towns.
You don't want to scare someone away thinking that they have to do that also.
Very, very true, yeah.
Actually, it's not critical to replace that position, though we have something critical.
Yeah, I think I might let Dan handle, handle how much, how, how to approach his job with, with someone else.
Okay.
Well, thank you guys.
Okay.
They have taken me first.
Yes.
And being so.
Thanks for working on that.
Oh, you're very.
And probably do. We appreciate you.
Anna, I have thirteen baby chicks.
All right.
Thirteen, boy, the baby does, get out of the house.
Yeah, they're at that age, time to send them out.
Ready to go out in the cage, living girls. Anyway, okay, guys, how about some geese? Would you like a couple geese? A couple geese? Why? I think I'd be afraid of geese.
Well, it would scare a pest away, maybe.
I, yeah, my neighbor next door called, said, hey, I have a thought, should I probably do something to my cat, you know? That's okay, Carrie, just the way you're jumping on that. Still considering whether I would keep a rooster, so I'll stay away from geese, thank you guys.
Moving on to animal control search. I was hoping someone was gonna come in tonight.
Oh, but no luck?
Could I?
Yep.
The, I was in Control Mount Vernon for a while, it was what, ten, twelve years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years, no. It's a very difficult job, and back then. They didn't really pay anything to the mount, save, and, but the insane, I, what I thought. I mean, I was a master guide, a lot of, I, you know, referring to the animal side of things and wildlife. And I took the class, classes, and. I got some really crazy phone calls, and some people in Mount Vernon were very hard to deal with. On a low paying job like that, one individual called me down by Belgrade Stream. And I showed up at night and there was kind of a weasel type animal. And his dog had killed it, if I can remember correctly, and he insisted that I take it to the state. It's just an example. And so I took the animal down to the state and they told me to get the hell out, if they don't do that kind of stuff. This guy made a complaint to the, the town about me. And then I hit someone, killed my dog. But whether or not that was related to the fact that. You know, I was trying to be, you know, people would have a beagle show up in their yard, or. One woman said there was an evil bothering your horse, and I mean.
That's not something that.
My, yeah. Well, I don't know, I tried to help them, but anyway, that's all I'd say, it's a very hard job.
It is a very hard job.
And we called the last lady, we had a severe problem with the neighbor.
Yes.
And. She was pretty helpful, but she, in fact, told us that there is no barking dog when it's in Mount Vernon. And there certainly is.
There's a state one.
There's a Mount Vernon Town ordinance, there is, Alex showed it to me, it was.
Nineteen seventy-one.
But it, it does apply, I believe, to, you know, it's not a timely thing. So.
Times for animal control?
Only on the website.
What does it pay?
Forty-five hundred dollars a year.
Plus mileage?
Mileage, yeah.
At forty-five, oh, sixty-something.
Thirty-two cents for forty-five.
To be discussed.
Forty-five cents. A mile.
Yeah, they gave me a list of. People who had dogs who had not paid their, it's crazy, there was like a hundred and something, I couldn't drive to all those people's houses.
That's part of the, well, it's, it's a hard job.
It is a very hard job. It's not a good friendly job either.
It's, it's a.
They don't give you as, you know, they.
I know.
Mister, I'm here to help.
Yeah.
No, it's.
That's the tough part of that, that job.
Yeah. Anyway.
What about advertising, I think?
On the one.
On the name and intable website on their job board.
That's a good idea.
I thought about it. All these years later, but honestly, I'm not gonna be around enough to. Have somebody call and may, may immediately. You know, it's pretty demanding.
Yeah, well, I'll contact that person that.
That you would have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they have to be a resident of Mount Vernon?
No, 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 because the one that was ours.
Right.
She did several towns. A lot of them do several towns to make any money anyway. And I guess Wayne is looking for.
Oh, another person. What about, was Reed Field?
Belgrade is looking.
Belgrade. Wow, they gather with three towns and hire one person?
Don't they have to submit their mileage at the meeting or to the, or to the town?
Yeah.
So how do they do that?
In, in the payrolls.
Is the last, the last, well, how did she physically submit it when?
She, she gave, actually she. There's supposed to be reports too, calls, just kind of a lot of the calls.
A lot, right?
She, she gave me her law with the mileage on it.
If she was complaining about that, when she came to our house, I, I didn't know what to say. I told her to submit.
Yeah.
The paperwork and.
All she has to do is.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on broadband.
Broadband.
Bill, it's all yours.
Hello broadband people.
Thank you. I sent over a hand, but I could share my screen if that would be possible.
I think that would be good, because I have Bob's laptop.
Let's see if I can do that. It's disabled by the host. Who's the host?
I'm probably the host soon.
I made a copy.
Let's see, try again. Still disabled.
You can make your host for a minute, but don't leave without making us host back.
Okay. Sure that, can you see that? Oh, good, good. So this will be very brief. I'm gonna. We're asking the select board to approve our sending a letter to Matrix Design Group. For an exclusive, non-binding letter of intent to negotiate an agreement. On its most recent broadband proposal. And what I'd like to do now is just give you a couple of the reasons why we're doing this, and then take any questions you have, okay? So the, the letter will just, first of all, establish good faith with an organization that if we wind up doing business with them, we'll be doing business with them for many years. But we also need to get additional details to fulfill the roadmap that we laid out at the town meeting. We need to refine the project cost, and that involves some kind of. More detailed analysis of the telephone poles in town. We need to prepare for a grant application and a ballot referendum. If you recall. Those were the two contingencies in the article that passed at the town meeting. And then we have a digital inclusion plan, which is gonna be rolling out over the next couple of months, and that's gonna happen regardless. Of what happens with the infrastructure, but that's also something that we would want to coordinate with if we do have a new company. Having a letter of intent will not require the town to do anything. All we're going to do is negotiate to find out more about exactly what the deal would be. And we would keep the select board in, in close contact with that process all along. So Matrix Design Group is one of the companies that. Has. Proposed a fiber to the home solution. We had four companies submit proposals to us. One of them was fixed wireless, one of them was cable, and two of them were fiber to the home. We think fiber to the home is the smart thing to do for a number of reasons. First of all, it's the only technology that currently meets. The emerging state and national standards of a hundred over a hundred for, to qualify for grants. The lower total cost of ownership has to do with the longevity of, of, of fiber. I recently got copies of manufacturers warranties for fiber, which are twenty-five years. And for cable, which are ten years. It's no accident that when Spectrum made its proposal to Mount Vernon. To build out the third of the town that is not currently. Having cable, that they proposed to build out fiber, not cable. So that's one of the big reasons that we're interested in a fiber solution. And then finally. Fiber requires less power to run. It works on light, not on electricity. And therefore, it is much more resilient during power outages. So just to re, to review. We're asking the select board to approve our sending a letter of intent, a non-binding letter of intent to negotiate. It's not gonna tie us into anything, but it's gonna allow us to move forward. We're picking fiber because we think it's the technology that will have the longer term best solution for the town. And we're talking to Matrix, which was one of the two companies that submitted fiber proposals. Because they were the most experienced and most professional. Group, and they did not. Require a municipally owned approach. If you follow what's going on in other towns, that was one of the big. Arguments that the cable companies and their lobbyists made in print media and Facebook ads against Reed Field's proposal. Our proposal does not require town ownership, but it permits it if after five years. Anytime between the fifth year and the twentieth year. The town decides that ownership is a good idea, this particular proposal would permit that. Another reason why we think this is a good idea is that the entire comp, all the services provided by this company will be provided by company employees. The other firm primarily works with contractors. And in this case, uncertainty of, in economic terms. And the demand for cable, particularly in Maine, not for cable, for fiber and internet construction. We think that having a company that owns its own resources is an advantage. So, and then as far as references go, they had the very excellent references for. Fiber networks that are currently in business. So that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Do you know what towns, if any, near us are working with them as well?
They're working in Wilton, I believe, in Franklin County. They, they've worked with a, a number of towns, maybe eleven towns in New England. They are based in New Jersey. But they have a pretty big footprint in New England. The, the town, one of the towns in Massachusetts that we spoke with for references. Has been in business with them for a, a year or two and is extremely satisfied.
Well, that's Massachusetts.
Because we have some fiber in town, goes up to the school, actually past the school. It's on forty-one. By State Library. Would they take over those? Or would they run? Or would they run their own?
Well, my understanding and and um is that there's there's different elements. There's fiber in the street today. And the the fiber to the home uh construction really depends on the connection between what's in the street. And what goes to the person's home. So um there may be, I I don't know about what the school has and what the library has, but I don't think they have. A fiber connection. Throughout, because as far as I know, they don't have the ability to provide high symmetrical um bandwidth. One of the big issues with um. Cable distribution from the street to the premise. Is that it cannot support the upload speeds that are necessary for newer applications.
The library is provided, they did a big thing with the state, state library. Whatever it is, and and that's how they got their.
Library in the school, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Oh, you're talking about the 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 fact that there there's a special economic deal that Spectrum has with the library and the town.
Yeah, they. Yeah, they have fairly high-speed internet, right, in their library?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the school. Yeah, I don't know if it's fiber right to the school or to the library, I'm not sure, but they they have higher speeds than most people in town.
The 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 Spectrum product line includes speeds up to five hundred over forty or so. Which are probably uh higher than what the library or the school would need. They have a a business uh line of business that's different from residential that also provides high speeds. That there is a technological limit, though, on what they can do on upload speed. And the the granting authorities in the state are. They're not requiring it yet. We don't know what they're going to require, but the the today fiber can produce a gigabyte. Up and down symmetrical speed where whereas uh cable can just cannot do that.
That's a question.
Yep.
Uh I was in the electrical business most of my life and have done a lot of fiber type work. And it's my understanding, if you had to bring fiber into someone's house, the cost would be very high. Is that true? Are you're are you don't know the cost yet? Because I believe we'd have to have fiber to go into each house.
Right.
And the cost would be uh it really astronomical. If I'm not mistaken, that's why they use.
Part of what the we're trying to do here is to understand what the cost will be, so.
Right.
You don't really know.
You don't know, yeah.
I mean, it's it's not astronomical by any means.
Yes, it is.
It is, it's well, it requires a specally, you'll see.
So what other towns does this company in Maine provide services other than Wilton?
Um did you say other towns?
I don't know what other town. I will, as far as I know, Franklin County uh may be the only place in Maine. We can find that out. Um and as far as the question about connecting. The some, one of the things we're talking about is for any connection of up to three hundred feet. It could be not no charge for early adopters, for maybe the first five hundred early adopters. And it's not going to be more than a few hundred bucks, I don't think, for anybody to connect. But again, as Carl Carl said, it's going, that's one of the things we want to negotiate. And again. Uh where we want to go down this path to be able to come back to you and everybody in town with all the facts that they would need to make a good decision.
Just speaking personally, if I have to pay several hundred dollars just to connect and that's not ongoing service, that's kind of a big deal.
Well, let's.
It's what they're working on though.
Let's let's find out what the costs are. Let's not jump to conclusions. Um our initial analysis is that it's going to actually cost less than what you're paying now. So let's.
Does that include that I'll be paying taxes on top of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, that would be good. That was good to say.
By the way. Yeah, our our understanding is that the proposal from Matrix would be to rewire the entire town. With fiber, which would have a warrant, a manufacturer's warranty of twenty-five years. Which is two and a half times the manufacturer's wire warranty for cable. And so uh one of our committee members likened this to uh having a used car and and having to fix breakdowns. And you know, you can keep it, we could keep it, we can keep the cable going for a while, but at some point. Uh over the life of the your need for this resource. It just doesn't make sense to invest anymore in old technology. Anyway.
So what you mean is this a signature on this um letter to Chris?
So I would, I would, I'm gonna, I would be glad to send the letter and simply say that the select board approved us of doing it.
Okay, okay.
Um can you go back a couple of slides, Bill?
Sure, let me uh.
Yeah, to that one, thank you. Are we feeling good? Um. Okay, I would move that the select board approves the Mount Vernon Broadband Committee in sending. Um. A letter of intent, a non-binding letter of intent to the Matrix Design Group. Um to negotiate an agreement um to provide broadband services to Mount Vernon.
Second. Get the vote. Old paper. Three, three zero.
Thank you. And um.
Broadband Committee for all your hard work sorting through the proposals.
Well, yes, we'll be back and take your host back, Anna.
Okay, yeah, can you give it back to me?
Good, good luck on your Friday. Thing.
Right.
I'm gonna say, and what was it about the new website for a few minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
You're welcome to stay, Bill, and Ken, thank you to you too.
We need help on that. New website, we're not getting anywhere on that. Um revise, is it?
Yeah.
Um. A week ago, they wanted us to do these, make a map.
Oh, right.
They told us how to do the the map. Um I don't think Alice understood how to do it. And I definitely didn't know how to do it. Um I'd be glad to step up. She was going too fast for us. She knew what she would add. The lady. Thing was Angela, Angela or something like that. Was was showing us, she was dragging the things from one thing to another and she completely lost me. Alice was trying to do the the. Town webs uh downtown newsletter at the same time, and so both of us didn't. We didn't get very much out of it. Yes.
I'll be glad to step up and help.
Yes, that would be.
Yeah, I think we have a draft one. I don't know if you are on email. I can. Before to.
Okay. Yeah, oh, this is.
Or maybe revised sent to.
Alright, so you created.
That's the map.
Yeah, that's your site plan.
Yeah.
Good.
So that needs to happen next.
Is it? Is he doing a copy of that?
That would be great.
You could take this.
Okay.
It's not doing me. But in the right hands. Um. I have anything else on that.
So is there a contact with this new site that I can reach out to?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes. I know that uh. Uh Paul and has told me a little bit about it. Paul was trying to do some things with it, but she wasn't helping him at all.
Let me see if I can find it.
That's very great.
Did you find that?
That page. What's the password on that for me? Give me that back. I want to use my password. If you need to use it, use it.
My understanding is that you want to basically have each uh committee or department uh be able to manage their own content.
This, correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So we we set it up so Alice and I, I think Paul is also an administrator. And you could be set up as an administrator. She could do that for you.
Okay.
And you could touch each of those. So once that map is set up. Then we could move from the old site to the new site.
Right.
And that's what Paul wanted to do, but without having that set up. There's no way to.
Is this, is this now part of the agreement with revise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul thought they were going to do that. But she's saying, no, we have to do that, so.
Wasn't there something too that? You had to, they were saying you had to type in all the content?
No, just that that.
Okay.
That.
Okay.
Usually the content is uh bringing in documents.
Yeah.
And posting the documents.
Yes, so once we start moving stuff over, then we can start moving more things like maps and references and stuff like that. But it's basic, basically it's setting that up first.
Well, you can start moving them over or they.
They would, we would move that.
Yeah, we would probably be.
Yeah. And it didn't look, she made it look pretty easy, but. If you're not familiar with that kind of stuff, it's not. I thought if I could at least do one, I could start, but. Nope.
Got lots of the resources I can call on.
Good.
Guy on the TV is.
Okay.
We're referring to you, Ken.
Oh, dude.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um. We'd like to do the commitment next meeting. I've done calculations. Like you, the back check me.
Yeah.
Not right now, but.
Yeah.
My goodness.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything?
Yeah, I mean, other business.
Yes.
This has been um. I meant to bring this up last meeting and then I completely blanked. We got an email about the roadside memorial.
Yes, that's done.
Is it all set? Okay.
It was not our issue.
Okay.
It's on private property.
So they can.
And it's clearly it's gone.
Okay, great, thank you. I missed the update.
Oh. Nelson is the one that called me about the ACO. It was her husband. I don't know what his name is. But I. Yeah, and Vicki Nelson wanted to come in for a liquor license tonight.
Oh, okay. Or maybe next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Apparently the modern pest service is going up on their rates. You gave that.
Not shocking.
Do I get that to you?
Oh, actually, we.
Or do I give that to Lee?
Well, he was just in asking me about it. I'd seen it and I said, no.
Yeah, I just got it.
Okay, because he he thinks he did this, but I'll take a look at it and just. I'd like to make sure that we get it in from the south.
Yeah. And that's a bill? Did you guys have anything?
No.
Okay.
Congratulations, so.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Did you get a copy of the bill? Uh I know you paid the half of the, but did you get a copy of the policy?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you did, okay.
Okay.
You got to throw that away.
But we need to be careful because um. A lot of time, I've seen, there was a, somebody put a bill in Jason's box.
Hmm.
And Jason never picks his stuff up.
He's, he never picks them up. Um but there's also. Um we had a workers' comp bill that Alice had in here for you guys, and I luckily saw it.
Maybe I'll go through. When I come up, I'll go through his stuff.
Yeah, well, I think it just needs to be that anything having to do with money.
Yeah.
To, don't put them in people's individual boxes that never happened to be up here.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been checking Alice's desk too for stuff that comes in, just in case.
Okay.
Anything from you?
Uh I did talk, do you want to talk about the cars?
Yes. Yep, the solar.
Yeah. Um so what I did is I talked to several different towns and we're actually pretty far ahead and the auditors were happy with how. Undoing things is getting you to approve things, pre-approve them up to.
Yeah.
So that I don't have to call and get people to come into, but can get bills out that I know are coming.
Yeah.
So as I understand it, I'm going to be getting an email, but we still won't have two weeks for me to be able to do it. The first couple, you're gonna have to to trust me and just kind of give me a blank check because they won't have any idea what they're going to be.
Right.
None of us will.
When is that gonna start? What is this? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
What happens is we get like the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, they get one, two, three, four bills. Now, we can't guess those, so what she will give us is at times will it be a blank check. It'll say up to five thousand dollars, so we'll sign that. And then the next meeting, when we come in, it'll be the actual figure. It'll say three thousand nine hundred and sixty-six, so that cover it.
Because I always have to have two signatures and sometimes, you know, people are working, I need to do it. The only exception is GA.
Yes.
And so that gives me the ability to not have to catch guys to come in and sign things.
Right.
And not pay those.
So on this solar project, we just signed the contract last meet.
Oh, we didn't sign it.
Oh, we, uh yeah, that's true. We motioned to approve it with if.
With me finding out.
Payments.
We're buying into uh. Like Clinton or something.
Solar Farm in Clinton that um.
Who's gonna give us like fifteen, about five thousand dollars in credits?
Uh about five thousand in savings.
Savings.
Over.
A year.
Yeah.
It, but we have to pay, we're we're gonna pay a CMT bill and then we're gonna pay a a solar power bill. But the solar power bill is due. Immediately.
Yeah, and it's, and you won't know how much.
Because they take it out of the checking account.
Yeah, you have to to set it up and what I'm going to do is we have a separate debit card. We have our general checking, but we have a separate debit card account for things like this that limits our exposure. So that I fund, put money over there when I know bills are coming through, so I'll just have to keep it front loaded for a while.
Till we figure out.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
And what I'll still do is wait till I get the email and I'll have them pull debit card account.
Yep.
And I'll just fund it based on the email they get and then put it through the next one.
Yeah.
Carl, I'll forward you the.
Yeah.
That you mentioned about the project in general, so you can get a sense of it.
So the yeah, that gives us a chance to. Let her do her work. Payrolls.
But the the solar piece is just to lower the the solar costs.
Of our electric.
We're, we're, yeah, it's a solar farm and we're we're buying into it, so we're giving them the money to operate.
Yeah.
Um, that's odd because I get flyers all the time, basically just.
I know.
Fifteen percent discount and.
Yeah, everybody buy everywhere on a lot of those things. This was something that Paul worked out.
Now, okay.
Really. Did pretty good. If we're gonna get that five thousand, it's gonna be really good.
That's really interesting though, because I've been looking at the, the news now is that. Everybody's rates are going down because of all the extra power they're getting as these solar farms come online and alternative. Um, so rates from CMP are going down. Maybe, but now CMP is looking to.
Right.
Put them back up.
Yeah.
So there's that and then we're gonna get a credit, we're gonna buy. Stuff from the solar farm.
But solar is killing CMP.
Yeah.
Yeah, CMP has to pay a certain rate and it's not a rate that's at a good advantage to CMP.
Yeah.
That, that's what killed the southern.
Based on propane.
California power companies. In Hawaii, this, everybody's putting solar power on their houses. In, in Hawaiian power company is, they're going broke. They gotta buy, they gotta buy that power, extra power. It's just, it's ruining these utilities.
But the CMP only delivers, transmits sub-power. They don't, they don't generate.
They don't generate.
And so. Off of through the state of Maine.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's where your savings would be is.
Right.
The cost of this, the energy produced.
Right.
Except that right now they have to pay, isn't the rate that they have, CMP has to pay the providers. Based on propane.
Yeah.
The price of propane.
Right, which is ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
I don't understand.
Yeah, that's ridiculous. I don't, I don't know why the KUC is not doing something about it. Hey, I had a question.
You're almost paid by signing that and sending it down.
How do you get that? How do you get that little on, on that computer?
Oh, I don't know, probably in special characters.
Can you get that to you?
Yeah, special character.
I can try to show you.
I had, I had to leave it off, yeah, when I did this.
Oh, yeah.
Gap in there.
Draw it in.
That's where. I couldn't do it. It's gotta be there someplace. It looks like the S or two S's. I could have done that, one S.
There's all kinds of characters that are available, but they hidden just. So I just had to fix this up with my name instead of Paul.
Okay, perfect. Oh, yeah.
Um, a couple, we just went over this in Vienna, so I thought I could, sure, because we have. Well, kind of, we're working together. We have a lot of social requests, um. Hospice, things, the sexual assault and crisis and family violence. That what I don't do is, I, they're not that much, but I don't pay those until our first taxes are due. So we're getting some influx of money. So right now I'm just trying to post and not spend a whole lot of money, so I won't be paying any of those unless.
Right. I'll give you the bills and let you make it when, when you can pay them.
Yeah, I feel like this past year, some never sent bills. We had to do like June payment.
Yeah, and that's pretty, that was the other thing is that I really hate to, the smaller ones, I really hate to pay out. Until they send a bill because. A lot of times it's individual people that they have the stuff sent to their house, so the address that I have, it goes to the wrong house. Having to reissue checks. So that's just. But I just FYI on that.
The only other thing is Paul grew up a RFP for a tower.
Oh.
Haven.
Yeah.
But Lee says he can't get ready in time.
Okay.
This year. So there's no sense going off the bid for a tower.
Okay, we can't squeeze it in the summer, is what Leah's saying.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So it's, you know, you send the bid off the tower, they're going, gonna give you a, a few months before they're gonna.
Yeah.
Prices all going up so fast. It, um, Jason found out on the tower.
Oh, yeah.
It went up eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
They want to move the tower that's on the two houses down. Uh, it's a fire tower, uh, a fire. You call it.
Booster thing.
Yeah, it's their transmitting tower. If they lose Winthrop, they can still dispatch from local. But it's on a private property. So we're having it moved to this place and it's gonna cost like twenty-eight thousand. And he doesn't have that money.
Yeah.
So I'm making a list of. Health officer, ACO. Sorry, but.
Now, the same thing happened though with the tarmac.
Yeah.
And his security system, he went out and got prices for everything, submitted his budget based on that. So we did talk about it and they said, when he has left over this year, we'll be rolling into. June.
Yeah.
Those roll into their capital and. That to me, he can come up and ask for permission to take it out of this capital.
Right.
So he can cover some of it, but not everything.
Right.
Yeah, he said you were very helpful, Carrie, I was talking to him. Thanks to Jason too.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Uh, are you all thinking about the overdrafts too?
Yeah, should we do that next time or, or another time now?
It's not quite ready yet because I still have, I know the library won't be coming in. I still have to do one more payroll. So, so it'll be, yeah, another July before I can really say this is it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll be ready next time.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Mark, we're gonna go into executive session, so you can. Uh, sign us off.
Right.
If you can hear me.
Good night, everyone watching out there.